Boarding in progress.
Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock. It's nine AM on this wonderful beautiful day of the state of 2023. Welcome to 2023. The Board of County Commissioners meeting is in order now, so please rise for an invitation by Commissioner Tony Has.
Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the much needed watch here. Lord, as we enter this new year, please heal the broken people. Make well to sin. We still have to bless those in despair. Provide for the last force, man, and guide us with your grace and bless our loved ones. Amen.
Commissioner Lewis Lopez, please, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine of justice for all.
Thank you, Congressman. Roll call, Mr. Dornkamp.
Commissioner Lewis Lopez, here. Commissioner Hess, here. Commissioner Pete Lopez, here.
Approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda, Mr. Dornkamp?
No changes, Commissioner.
In motion.
Move for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Lewis Lopez, yes. Commissioner Hess, yes. Commissioner Pete Lopez.
Yes, thank you. Consideration of minutes. We do not have any. Let's go to briefing of our correspondents commissioners. Commissioner Lewis Lopez, would you like to go first?
Thank you, Chairman. I fortunately did not attend any meeting. We didn't have any, so it was kind of nice to get a little break from a very, very busy year for 2022. I just wanted to say welcome to 2023, everyone. I wish everybody, our constituents, and our community a happy new year.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner McCann.
Yeah, I'd like to report that I probably had one meeting that I had to attend on December 4th. C.C. Ag. Rural Affairs Committee posted cage-free birds to legislature agriculture. She gave a report on the April birth. Estimating that 50 million birds, both wild and domestic, have died and have been reported in 46 states now. One of her own chicken producers in Rockville, Colorado, was hit, and the flu took down his population of 10,000 birds. He restocked and was hit again approximately six weeks later, taking out his whole production of new birds. Pending legislation was discussed. Topics of legislation that will be affecting ag were talked about. One of them was dealt with the pesticide application, beef processors, and not just weed management and enforcement by counties. Colorado Department of Agriculture asked for money for two new Bureau of Protection agents and also asked for money for a new mental health program to help with real stress. She also reported that cage-free requirements for egg production took effect on January 1st, 2023. And finally, she reported that Manzanola hay cubes have been recalled due to the fungus, due to a fungus in the cubes that causes a neurologic illness in horses. Symptoms include muscle tremors, difficulty standing, difficulty swallowing, eventually collapse and death. And that's another report.
Thank you, Commissioner. One of the interesting phone calls I received, and I think I don't know if we need to put that out there on our website, is a consumer not knowing that now bags at your local Walmart, plastic bags at the local Walmart and Safeway are not going to be dispensed, and they thought it was a county action. So I informed the constituent that actually it was legislation that was passed by the legislature in 2021. So as of yesterday, when we go to the grocery stores, you will have anyone that wants a plastic bag, and I don't know how long they're going to last, is $10. And so one of the questions is that, then the question now goes to perhaps for a conversation later on, but nonetheless, I'm going to put that notification out there. It's not the county implementing this. It's actually by legislative means. Also, as Commissioner Tony Has was giving the report, perhaps we can add verification, only cage-free eggs in Colorado, I believe, is what grocers are going to be allowed to sell. And so that is also legislatively mandated by the state of Colorado. And so from those things, we had a very good conversation with a consumer, and the question was, can the county help in some way, shape, or form to not make it mandatory? And I really, I need to go back and read the legislation because apparently some of the smaller groceries, grocers will not have to dispense, could continue to dispense plastic bags, but I'm going to have to read on that. And so that may be one of the conversations that needs to be put out there because it created a lot of havoc and confusion. So certainly, just kind of an FYI. One meeting that we had was the, I was nominated to the Action 22 by Commissioner Tony Has to serve on the executive group for the Leadership, Policy, and Governors Academy. And so we had our first meeting last week, and there was going to be a nonpartisan, of course, a nonprofit foundation through Action 22, an academy to prepare individuals should they decide to run for office and/or at the very least understand how county and state government work at the state level. So we are planning right now a seven-month curriculum. We had our first meeting, and I was honored to be invited to that, and we had a very robust discussion. We'll see what's going on. We think that the first academy will launch here in the early part of 2023. And one of our candidates already on the list is Commissioner Tony Has, so that's.
January 20. The first, first.
Yes. So from that perspective, this is one thing. I wanted to ask Mr. Dornkamp to give us an update. We had a very important letter that was received on behalf of the unfunded courthouse grant. I mean, I think that was a great score for Los Angeles County in 2023. And so if you can expound on that.
Just a brief update regarding that, having espoused many times, and the commissioners have espoused it also, that is Team Los Angeles County. Myself, Christie Corley, administrative assistant, Father Lucero, and all the commissioners were part of that application process and presentation process, and we were successful in pursuing and being awarded a $930,000 grant to make improvements here at the courthouse or HVAC system, and also a bench to be, replace the old bench in county chambers.
Is it district chambers or?
It's county court chambers. District chambers, I think, is at the par, but the current bench that the judge sits behind is basically a desk is what he sits behind, and they want to, they be in the courts, want to try and modify it and improve some so that it's much more easier for them. So $30,000 for it, $100,000 for HVAC system.
Congratulations.
Has there been any correspondence yet with DOLA and our DIF efforts?
As far as the paving project, yes. We were receiving an award letter last part of last month. That the $750,000 grant that we pursued was awarded, and we found that it falls. So we've been paving project, I'll get that out there in the next few months. And then on our next cycle, we'll be pursuing $1 million. That is, if DOLA allows for such, and my understanding is that they will be allow for a $1 million grant application to also go towards installing an HVAC system at the courthouse. So pursuing grants, and hopefully continue to be successful with that pursuit.
Chairman, if I may.
Please.
Congratulations to you guys, Team Los Angeles County. Three of you guys worked very hard on getting this done. And Commissioner Lopez, thank you for attending and being part of the grant process as well. $1.6 million coming to Los Angeles County because of the efforts of our team, our staff. This courthouse is going to be something that's going to be, for many, many years to come, protected for the use of our community. And I thank my fellow commissioners and our team for helping to pursue this process we started seven years ago, and is coming to fruition with our State Street. So I'm very proud of this. Thank you guys very much, and way to go. That's a good headline for you, Ben, Tom. That's a lot of money coming in, so thank you.
Thank you. Once again, reiterating that congratulations. Let's go now to elected officials update. I do not know if I can have anyone online, but let me follow on our county assessor. Do we have anyone from the attorney record's office? Anyone from the treasurer's office? Do we have anyone from the sheriff's office? District attorney? Our county coroner? Or our county surveyor? Okay, we'll move up now to any public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to address the Board of County Commissioners? Online, please unmute, raise your hand, and you will be given three minutes. Anyone on public comment? Okay, section six. We don't have any unfinished business. Now we are going to move to section seven, new business. 7A, consideration of resolution 23-001, designating KCRT-FM and KCRT-AM as official radio station for Los Angeles County. Mr. Dornkamp, I believe we have a resolution. Any commissioners, any questions? Right after the resolution? Go ahead and read the resolution, Mr. Dornkamp.
Resolution of Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, designated KCRT-92.5 FM and/or AM as official radio station for Los Angeles County, Colorado, 2023. Resolution number 23-001, whereas it is reasonable necessary for Board of County Commissioners to designate commercial radio station coverage throughout Los Angeles County as the official radio station for the purposes of broadcasting emergency notifications and the dissemination of information to the general public within Los Angeles County. And residential station KCRT-92.5 FM and AM are duly licensed by the Federal Communication Commission to operate as a general commercial radio station within Los Angeles County to function as the official emergency alert system, PRAN-EAS, and PRAN radio station for the purpose of broadcasting alerts and warnings to the public within Los Angeles County. Now therefore be resolved by Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, that the Board of County Commissioners hereby designate KCRT-92.5 FM and/or AM radio station located on 100 Fisher Drive, Trinidad, Colorado, as official radio station within Los Angeles County for the purpose of broadcasting on emergency alerts and warnings to the general public, the broadcasting of general information to the citizens of Los Angeles County during the calendar year 2023. Upon motion made, second affirmative vote, this resolution was adopted this 30th of January 2023, by the Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, followed by your signature.
Thank you, Mr. Dornkamp. Any discussion, commissioners? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution 23-001, designating KCRT-FM and/or KCRT-AM as official radio station of Los Angeles County.
Second motion. Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis Lopez?
Yes.
Yes. Set in the consideration of resolution 23-002, designating financial institutions for deposit of public funds for Los Angeles County. Mr. Dornkamp, please read the resolution.
Resolution, Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, designated financial institutions for deposit of public funds for Los Angeles County, Colorado, excuse me, Los Angeles County during 2023. Resolution number 23-002, whereas Board of County Commissioners required formally, designate financial institutions for the deposit of public funds of Los Angeles County. And whereas all financial institutions holding public funds require to satisfy requirements under CRS 11-10.51, Intend Public Deposit Protection Act, Grand BDPA, setting out the requirements for the protection of public funds held in deposit and whereas Los Angeles County Treasurer Don Biamani is responsible for the collection, custody, and distribution of public funds for tax entities within Los Angeles County. And State County Treasurer has recommended to the Board, the County Board, those financial entities that qualify under the BDPA for the holding of public funds during 2023. Now therefore be resolved by Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, number one. Board of County Commissioners, as hereby set the recommendations of County Treasurer Don, designate for the designation financial institutions that qualify under the BDPA for the deposit of public funds of Los Angeles County during 2023, including Century Savitz and Old Association, 233 East Main Street, Trinidad, Colorado, A10A2, Bank of the West, 125 North Commercial Street, Trinidad, Colorado, A10A2, IN Bank, Trinidad, 320 North, Convent Street, Trinidad, Colorado, A10A2, First National Bank, Trinidad, 100 East Main Street, Trinidad, Colorado, A10A2, Ace Investment Management, 10,002, 37 West, 52nd Place, Number 104, Uridge, Colorado, A0033, Colo Trust, Grand Colorado, Local Government, Liquid Asset Trust, 717 17th Street, Suite 1850, Giver, Colorado, A0202, Sea Safe, 1675 Broadway, Suite 500, Giver, Colorado, A0202. On motion made, second affirmative vote, this resolution was adopted this 30th of January 2023, by the Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, followed by your signature.
Thank you. Mr. Dornkamp, any discussion, commissioners? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Move for approval of resolution 23-002, designating all the aforementioned financial institutions for the deposit of public funds for Los Angeles County. Second.
Commissioner Lewis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Lopez?
Yes. 7C, consideration of resolution 23-003, designating Trinidad Chronicle News and/or Werewolf World Journal Publications for Los Angeles County. Mr. Dornkamp.
Resolution, Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, designating the Chronicle News and the World Journal as official newspapers, a publication of legal notices by Los Angeles County during 2023. Resolution number 23-003, whereas in accordance with state statutes, the Board of County Commissioners and other elected officials are required from time to time to have legal notices published and to disseminate other information to the general public within Los Angeles County. And whereas the Chronicle News and the World Journal are newspapers of general circulation within Los Angeles County, and are therefore qualified to publish legal notices and other public information that is required to be published by Los Angeles County. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, that the Board of County Commissioners hereby designate the Trinidad Chronicle News and/or the World Journal as the official newspapers for the purpose of publication of legal notices and such other legal publications required by law during 2023. Upon motion made, second, affirmative vote, this resolution was adopted this 30th of January 2023, by order of Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, followed by your signature.
Thank you, Mr. Dornkamp. Any discussion? What kind of data motion?
Chairman, if I may, to motion my name is like to thank both representatives that are here today from the Trinidad Chronicle News and Werewolf World Journal for being here with us and reporting on us on an annual basis. So with that said, I will make the motion to approve resolution 23-003, designating Trinidad Chronicle News and Werewolf World Journal for its publications for Los Angeles County.
Second motion. Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Lopez?
Yes. 7D, consideration of resolution 23-004, establishing dates and times for conducting the Board of County Commissioners meetings for Los Angeles County. Mr. Dornkamp.
Resolution of Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, establishing the dates and times for the conduct of regular meetings of the Board of Commissioners during 2023. Resolution number 23-004, whereas Los Angeles, Los Angeles County Board of Commissioners in accordance with CRS 30-10-303, is required to meet at the county seat for the purposes of conducting county business no less frequently than once each month. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners is asked to continue its established practice of meeting twice monthly in a regular session for consideration of such business that may come before the Board and to be held on the first and third Tuesday of each calendar month, beginning at the hour of 9:00 AM. And whereas the Board reserves the right to meet a special session as deemed necessary with or to transact business that may not be reasonable to be held until a regular meeting. Now therefore be resolved by Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, one. For the calendar year 2023, the Board of County Commissioners shall meet a regular session twice monthly on the first and third Tuesday of each calendar month, beginning at the hour of 9:00 AM in the chambers located in Room 201, Los Angeles County Courthouse, 200 East First Street, Trinidad, Colorado, or virtually for the purposes of consideration of such matters that may come before the Board. On motion made, second affirmative vote, this resolution was adopted this 30th of January 2023, by the Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, followed by your signature.
Thank you, Mr. Dornkamp. Any commissioners? Any discussion? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Move for approval of resolution 23-004, establishing dates and times for conducting regular Board of County Commissioners meetings for Los Angeles County.
Second. Commissioner Lewis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Lopez?
Yes. 7D, consideration of resolution 23-005, establishing a schedule for periodic meetings, dates and times, Board of County Commissioners and Department of Human Services meeting. Mr. Dornkamp, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution, Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, establishing a schedule for periodic meeting dates and times for transactional business of the Board acting in its capacity as a Los Angeles County Board of Human Services during the calendar year 2023. Resolution number 23-005, whereas Board of County Commissioners serves as the Los Angeles County Board of Human Services in accordance with CRS 26-1-116. And whereas the Los Angeles County Board of Human Services is required to be periodically to conduct human services-related business, consider such other human services-related matters as may come before the Board of Human Services. And whereas the Los Angeles County Board of Human Services in accordance with state statute oversees the provisions of public assistance within the county in accordance with rules and regulations established by the Colorado Department of Human Services for administration of public assistance in welfare activities. Whereas the San Francisco Board of Human Services self-reside at all meetings of the Board of Human Services, and authorized by Board action, such it all shall execute all documents approved by the Board of Human Services. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, at one. For the calendar year 2023, the Board of County Commissioners shall meet in its capacities at the Board of Human Services after the very last regularly scheduled Board of County Commissioners meeting of each month. To all meetings of the Board of Human Services shall begin immediately following the conclusion of Los Angeles County Board of County Commissioners regularly, unless otherwise posted, and shall be held in the Commissioners' chambers of the Los Angeles County Courthouse, Room 201, located 200 East First Street, Trinidad, Colorado, or virtually. Three, the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners shall also serve as a Chairman of the Board of Human Services. On motion made, second affirmative vote, this resolution was adopted this 30th of January 2023, Board of Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, followed by your signature.
Thank you, Mr. Dornkamp. Any discussion, commissioners? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution 23-005, establishing a schedule for periodic meeting dates and times for the Board of County Commissioners and Department of Human Service meetings.
Second motion. Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Lopez?
Yes. 7F, consideration of resolution 23-006, designating holidays, holiday observation for Los Angeles County. Mr. Dornkamp, please read the resolution.
Resolution, Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, designating holidays to be observed by Los Angeles County during the calendar year 2023, including New Year's Day 2024. Resolution number 23-006, whereas Los Angeles County is a unit, local government within the state of Colorado recognizes various holidays that occurred during the calendar year 2023. And whereas authorities vested by the Board of County Commissioners to designate those holidays to be observed by Los Angeles County during calendar year 2023, now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, at one. The following dates occurring during the calendar year 2023 shall be observed as official holiday. Recognized by Los Angeles County shall include New Year's Day 2024, Martin the 13th, Junior Day, Monday, January 16th, 2023, President's Day, Monday, February 20, 2023, Memorial Day, Monday, May 29, 2023, Independence Day, Tuesday, July 4, 2023, Labor Day, Monday, September 4, 2023, Columbus Day, Monday, October 9, 2023, excuse me, Veterans Day, Friday, November 10, 2023, Thanksgiving Day, Thursday, November 23, 2023, Day after Thanksgiving, Friday, November 24, 2023, Christmas Eve, observed, Friday, December 22, 2023, Christmas Day, Monday, December 25, 2023, New Year's Eve, observed, Friday, December 29, 2023, New Year's Day, Monday, January 1, 2024. On motion made, second affirmative vote, this resolution was adopted this 30th of January 2023, by order of Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, as a follower of your signature.
Thank you, Mr. Dornkamp. Any discussion, commissioners? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Move for approval of resolution 23-006, designating holiday observation of the Los Angeles County. Second.
Commissioner Lewis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Lopez?
Yes. 7D, consideration of resolution 23-007, establishing hours of operation for Los Angeles County departments. Mr. Dornkamp, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution, Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, establishing hours of operation for offices and departments of Los Angeles County during the calendar year 2023. Resolution number 23-007, whereas in accordance with CRS 30-109, the Board of County Commissioners authorized to establish the hours of operation for all offices and departments of the county for access by the public to transactional daily business during calendar year 2023. And whereas it is the desire of the Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, to accommodate the needs of the general public during 2023, to provide access to various offices and departments of the county by establishing hours of operation during which times the general public may transact business in such offices and departments, except for designated holidays, such business to include the payment of taxes and fees, obtaining information, acquiring licenses, records, and other documents, etc. Now therefore be resolved by Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, at one. Public hours of school and road and bridge maintenance during the calendar year 2023 of all offices and departments of Los Angeles County, school and road and bridge maintenance, shall be open Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM to the public. These offices and departments will be closed Saturday through Sunday in designated holidays. Public access to the public asset, public access to the courthouse, public access into the Los Angeles County courthouse shall be allowed Monday through Friday beginning at 7:30 AM and concluding at 5:00 PM, except for designated holidays. However, access to various offices and agencies during these times may be amended according to your specific hours of public operation.
On motion made, second, second, affirmative vote, this resolution was adopted this 30th of January 2023, Board of Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, followed by your signature.
Thank you, Mr. Dornkamp. Discussion? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution 23-007, establishing hours for operation of Los Angeles County departments.
Second motion. Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Lopez?
Yes. Yes. Seven H, consideration of Resolution twenty-three dash zero zero eight, establishing posting locations of meeting notices for Los Angeles County and Department of Human Services. Mister Durham County, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution, Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado, establishing posting locations of meeting notices for the Board of County Commissioners' meetings and the Board of Human Services' meetings for calendar year twenty twenty-three. Resolution number twenty-three dash zero zero eight. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners and, when seated as the Board of Human Services for Los Angeles County, in conformance with C R S twenty-four dash six dash four zero two, the Colorado Meeting Act is required to conduct county business at meetings open to the public and to provide the public with timely notice of its, of its meeting dates, times, and locations. And whereas it is the duty of the Board of County Commissioners to provide timely public notice of the date, time, location, and subject matter of issues to be considered by the Board when meaning to consider action on any policy, position, essential rule or regulation, or to take formal action on any matter that may come before the Board of County Commissioners or in its capacity as the Board of Human Services. And whereas C R S twenty-four dash six dash four zero two, print two, imprint, print C imprint, provides for public bodies to satisfy compliance by the timely posting notices of such public meetings on the Los Angeles County website with a minimum of twenty-four hours of vast notice, when practical, of the date, time, location, subject matter of issues to be considered by the Board of County Commissioners. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado, one, excuse me, per se of C R S twenty-four dash six dash four zero two, to see notices of meetings of the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Human Services for twenty twenty-three, including, when practical, specific agenda identifying the subject of all matters to be considered by the Board during such public meetings, such during public meetings shall be posted on the following. Website, losanascounty.gov. Two, the public, the Board of County Commissioners designate the following locations as official public, official posting places for persons of these of the Board of County Commissioners, Board of Human Services. The Board of County Commissioners enable to post the notice online in, in cishet?
Excellent.
Thank you. Where you see service stands as such as power outage or weather, or interruption in internet services that prevent the public from accessing the notice online. A, a bulletin board placed at the entrance at the west doors to the Los Angeles County courthouse on East Maple Street, Trinidad, Colorado. B, a bulletin board is placed at the Commissioners' chambers entrance located in room two zero one, Los Angeles County courthouse. Courthouse is located two hundred East First Street, Trinidad, Colorado. On motion made, second affirmative vote, this resolution was adopted this third day of January twenty twenty-three, by order of Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado, followed by your signature.
Thank you, Mister Durham. Any discussion, commissioners? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Move for approval of Resolution twenty-three dash zero zero eight, establishing posting locations of meeting notices for Los Angeles County Department of Human Services.
Second motion. Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Jump into the next one.
Seven I, consideration of Resolution twenty-three dash zero zero nine, designating Dixon Water Company as fiscal auditor for Los Angeles County. Mister Durham, please read the resolution.
Resolution, Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado, designating Dixon Water Company as a fit, as a fiscal auditor for Los Angeles County for twenty twenty-three. Resolution number twenty-three dash zero zero nine. Whereas Board of County Commissioners required to have prepared annually a fiscal audit of all financial statements of the county for each fiscal year reflecting the financial position of the county in courts in general, with generally executive county principles and audit standards. And whereas such a fiscal audit is required to be prepared by a certified public accountant licensed by the State of Colorado, now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado, number one. The Board of County Commissioners hereby designates the firm Dixon Water and Company, Inc. as a financial auditor for Los Angeles County for twenty twenty-three. On motion made, second affirmative vote, this resolution was adopted this third day of January twenty twenty-three, by order of Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, followed by your signature.
Thank you, Mister Durham. Any commissioners, any discussion? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Motion approved. Resolution twenty-three zero zero nine, designating Dixon Water Company as the fiscal auditor for Los Angeles County.
Second motion. Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Leeselph?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes. We need a little time to break and come up. Seven J, consideration of O B C C number seven, the reserve ninety, Joel Sessions for seven seventy-eight fifty-one. I think this is criteria, unless Mister Durham County or anyone has any information. Pretty much standard procedure. Commissioners, any discussion?
Move for approval of O B C C number seven thousand nine to Joel Sessions for seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second motion. Commissioner Leeselph?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes. Seven K, consideration of Resolution twenty-three dash zero one zero, Desert Eagle Operations L L C. Mister Durham, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution, Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado, making findings in regular determination on the major facilities permit application, twenty twenty-two dash zero zero six, followed by Desert Eagle Operations L L C. Resolution twenty-three dash zero one zero. Whereas Desert Eagle Operation L L C has filed application, twenty twenty-two dash zero zero six, under the rules of procedure of Los Angeles County oil and gas regulations. Seeking approval for a heating processing facility to serve existing drilled heating gas wells, which were permitted and approved by the C O G C C, located in part of section one township thirty, south range fifty-five west. And whereas the application was reviewed by the Los Angeles County Planning Commission on December five, twenty twenty-two, has been recommended for approval. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners convening a public hearing on December twenty, twenty twenty-two, at which times the application was publicly heard, and testimony was taken from all interested parties, including representative of Desert Eagle Operation L L C. And whereas Board of County Commissioners taken into consideration the application and all supporting information submitted by the applicant, recommendation to the Los Angeles County Planning Commission, a public conference made during a public hearing for the application, now therefore being resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado, number one. Findings, the Board of County Commissioners hereby makes the following findings, is consideration of application, twenty twenty-two dash zero zero six, by Desert Eagle Operation L L C, seeking approval for a heating processing facility, one point one zero, major facilities review criteria, need the desert, the Desert Eagle Operation L L C has officially demonstrated a need for a heating processing facility and location proposed, as evidenced by the information supporting the application. Suitability, the Desert Eagle Operation L L C has officially provided the suitability of the proposed location and operation of heating processing facility, as evidenced by the information supporting the application. Adequacy of existing roads and access to the site, the Desert Eagle Operation L L C has officially demonstrated the adequacy, the access roads, the site proposed for the heating and processing facility, as evidenced, as evidenced by the information supporting the application. Compatibility, the Desert Eagle Operating L L C has officially demonstrated that the proposed heating processing facility is compatible with the surrounding land uses, as evidenced by the information supporting the application. Two, the Board of County Commissioners does hereby approve application, twenty twenty-two dash zero zero six, by Desert Eagle Operation L L C for heating, for heating processing facilities serving existing drilled heating gas wells, which were permitted and approved by the C O G C C, and located in the part, and located in the part of section one township thirty, south range fifty-five west. On motion made, second affirmative vote, this resolution was adopted this third day of January twenty twenty-three, by order of Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado, followed by your signature.
Thank you, Mister Durham. I think you set a record today. Discussion, commissioners? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'd just like to thank our planning and zoning board members for their time and effort that they put forward for this community, and also for our land use director, Mister Bob Lucero, for preparing this information that come before us before we had an opportunity to rule on these. So with that said, I will make the motion to approve Resolution twenty-three zero one zero, Desert Eagle Operating L L C.
Second motion. Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Leeselph?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes. Well said, Commissioner Leeselph, I appreciate those comments. Section eight, we'll give Mister Durham a little bit of a rest here. Financial matters, consideration of bills and payroll for the second half of December two thousand twenty-two, finance and regular voting.
Payroll as of December thirty-first was one hundred eighty-two thousand, nine fifteen and ninety-two cents. Do you have any questions on payroll?
No, I mean, we'll see the increase in the next cycle, so.
Yes. That's the original, we're giving about a hundred. Let's see, bills, please. So you'll always be, what we're, what we're doing now, since we picked a route, we're gonna pay bills every other week, and so it'll be the opposite week of payroll, just for probably for a while?
Okay.
Okay, just to tell you, so that's why we've crowned everything to twenty, at December twenty eighth, okay? So invoice and paper, two hundred sixty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars and fifteen cents. I didn't see anything that was, um, pictometry, pictometry, that was the first payment for twenty twenty-two, we did approve that, and we did budget for twenty twenty-three. Anything else, uh, unless you have any questions that I might?
And I think if a staggering, you know, both reports do on the same week, I mean, although the cycle continues, but I like that approach.
Okay, just to let you know that. Just maybe in a couple months, if, if it works out well, then we'll keep it, if not, we'll go back to, just to see how things act, that's okay.
Sounds good, absolutely, that's fine.
Thank you.
Everybody's getting paid, and we think it must be appreciated. There, any questions on financials? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Move for approval of bills and payroll for the second half of December two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Mr. Leeselph?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, and thank you for all the work that you're giving us. Much appreciated. So now section nine, executive session, the Board will meet in executive session under C R S twenty-four, six four two four B, confirmed with the county attorney for the purposes of receiving or applying specific legal questions. Here we are, the plastic back fee. Thank you. And so at this time, I will get a motion to suspend this meeting, not in order to execute the session.
So, second motion. Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Leeselph?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, we'll take short recess.